Oh, good, the recording started. All right, so it is that wonderful morning after where I answer the various questions. I do actually feel better, but I probably don't sound any better. So gonna be doing my best. So let's take a look at where we are. Okay, so I mentioned that I would do dealing with binary acids, both naming and this notion of what on earth is going on with HCl? And basically naming all the acids and naming all the hydrates. Okay, so first off, when, when we look at HCl and the fact that if it's a gas, this thing is called hydrogen chloride. And if this is aqueous, we actually call this something completely different. We then call it hydrochloric acid. And those are its two options. And the difference between them is whether it's in a gas form or whether it's in an aqueous form in water. Realize that I think a lot of folks hopefully have heard of this part. The fact that you're gonna name it hydro, then whatever the element is, and then ick acid. This over here on the right is what we refer to as a binary acid. So as far as naming binary acids, we are essentially just gonna name them for the hydrogen that's there, the element that's there, and ick acid. So it's relatively straightforward and you really do, because hydrochloric acid is one that is pretty cheap and it's used in a lot of labs. I usually just recommend people know that HCl aqueous is hydrochloric acid. And then whenever you see anything else, you just essentially know to swap out the element inside of there. So then this is hydro iodic acid, because this thing here is iodine. Hanging out over there, iodine. So to me, it's one of the easiest ways to figure out what's going on. As so as far, as far as this calling this thing hydrogen chloride, honestly, this, this is something that it is weird, but hydrogen is weird. So thinking about hydrogen for a minute, this is the thing where it only has one electron in that one S. So hydrogen, because it has one electron in the one S, this only ever gets to have one single bond. And this does also form a positive charge pretty easily. So thinking about it as if it was ionic, like that's is where we get this name, even though this is covalent. Hydrogen chloride is a covalent compound that is a covalent bond in there. It's not particularly one of the strongest covalent bonds ever, but it is, it is a covalent bond. So still two non-metals, still is actually covalent in the real world. When we get into chapter nine, there will be different language, very much like molecule for things with covalent bonds as well as compounds for things that have two different elements, but perhaps are ionic. There will also be additional language for describing covalent versus ionic. When you put things into water and hydrogen, hydrochloric acid is covalent. So hydrogen chloride still covalent, but hydrogen does form a positive charge pretty easily. So this, this is just kind of a habit of old, old names that when it's put with a variety of other compounds, you usually name it as if hydrogen was a metal, even though it's not, hydrogen's a non-metal. So the other one that oftentimes people then forget, because hydrogen is a non-metal, you can also put it with other things. And then this is sodium. And so this, believe it or not, is sodium hydride. So I think the other hard thing is, is that a lot of times hydrogen hangs out with covalent things and oftentimes is not always alone. Or if it's alone with one other element, it's often as an acid. So you just don't see these as often. So it seems like it's wrong, or it seems like it's strange. But you can put hydrogen with a metal and then you wind up with something like sodium hydride. But again, that, if it was with Cl, it would be sodium chloride with a hydrogen, sodium hydride. Should hopefully, is, is still following rules. It just breaks it when it's with another non-metal. Okay, one of the other things was to name oxo acids. So when we name oxo acids, what's happening is we have some sort of polyatomic ion. And we essentially are going to be adding enough hydrogens so that this positive three charge is canceled out by these positive charges. So, but honestly, that, that isn't actually what this looks like. Again, these are actually covalent bonds. So it's really happening since we drew phosphate before. And we talked about resonance. This is actually the weird time where when we actually start to get these things having hydrogens, every place where we would have had the height, the oxygen with three lone pairs, we now just have oxygens with two lone pairs. And every one of those will actually pick up a hydrogen. So this actually then does not have any resonance, by the way. So making these into acids does actually change them. But the point was to talk about naming. And also emphasize that hydrogen is in fact forming covalent bonds still. What we're gonna do is we still need to think about what this was originally. So this originally was a polyatomic ion called phosphate. And all we're actually gonna do is we're gonna change this ending. And some of these, we do change them a little bit more, so I know I'm adding, adding extra letters. Point is, is that we're adding the IC and acid in there. So adding the ick acid. If this had been, so if it's an ATE, we add ick acid. If we had something that was completely different. This is based off of phosphite. This becomes phosphorus acid. So the, not the, I didn't really want the R in there. Us acid. So basically, if your polyatomic ion ended in ATE, then we're gonna change this to ick acid. If it ended in ITE, we're gonna change this to us OUS acid. And that, that really is the rule. Now, the only other thing that I would warn is that there are some where you also have weird prefixes and they're just along for the ride. What I mean by that is if I wanted to have something like HClO, this is from hypochlorite. This then is just gonna become, oh, make sure it's aqueous. Hypochlorous acid. So whatever prefix was hanging out before, we are gonna keep whatever that prefix is as well. The other thing that people wanted to talk about was naming of hydrates. So hydrates, honestly, I'm gonna make one up that's not real. But this will hopefully be a good, a good refresh on some of the other things. So they look like this, these are not aqueous. This could actually be a solid. But this is from the periodic table. We're gonna know that chlorine is in 7A. So we know here that chlorine has a negative one charge, which means that this should be iron three chloride. So we are in fact naming the first part of this as if the water part didn't exist. So iron with the three in Roman numerals and chloride. Then all we're gonna do is we're gonna name the water. So we're gonna use prefixes for the number four. I think I had a thing with prefixes, there we go. And we're not gonna give these to you, you do have to have these memorized. But when you look at these, do, do keep in mind that you've probably seen some of these prefixes before, like an octopus has eight legs. A hexagon has six sides, a tricycle has three wheels. So some of these might be familiar to you. If not, then just memorize all of them. But we are gonna use the one for four, which is tetra. And then we're not gonna use the word water. We're gonna use a word that though you might have heard of before, especially when it's really hot outside, everyone tells you to stay hydrated. So we are just gonna name the water as hydrate. So this one is a little bit different. But also realize that we are doing this from right to left. So there's iron and there's iron and here's my chloride and here's my chloride. And here is the number four and there is the number four. And then something to do with water and here's something to do with water. So we really did just name this from left to right. All of the pieces, all the parts, not skipping anything. Oh, brother. I perhaps should have gotten myself more organized before I started. Too bad. Okay, the percent composition. Oh. I did acids, binary acids. If someone wanted to know about naming polyatomic ions, honestly, the only thing for naming polyatomic ions that I'm gonna recommend is basically to try to look at them in groups. So we already did phosphate and phosphate. And the fact that this is PO4 negative three and this is PO3 negative three. So good news is they have the same charge. And that is the same charge that a phosphide ion has. Phosphide being phosphorus by itself, based on the periodic table. So does actually have the same charge that just a regular phosphorus ion would have since it's in group five. Then the thing though is, is that it just means more oxygens. And it just means fewer. So this doesn't, this is not connected to a specific number of oxygens. It's just more and fewer. So do keep that in mind because, for example, nitrate has three oxygens and nitrite has two oxygens. So you can't necessarily have eight to be a particular number of oxygens, because it's not eight, just as more oxygens, it is fewer oxygens. So do keep that one in mind as you're studying what they really mean. Okay. So, oh, betcha, I know why it's on there. I feel a little better now. Good gosh. I got all over the place. So I'm gonna take a moment to write those down. I'm probably to make a different video because I haven't logged into e-learning yet. Okay, the chapter, so I talked about these exceptions last night. I'm gonna say that I did that, that's the fall 22 exam. This is all my extra stuff. Sometime I just kept going. There we go. Resonance and formal charge. Oh. Bond strength and bond length. And coordinate covalence. Resonance and formal charge. So I mentioned that one at the very tail end last night. The resonance and formal charge. So the thing is, is that if, if you are having to deal with resonance and formal charge, then you were gonna do what we did with the phosphate example, which is we went through the whole thing in the first review video. And we put in all of the electrons. And then we looked at formal charge and said, you know, this is not as good as we could go. We should, we should fix this. And so we went ahead and before we looked at resonance, we went ahead and optimized for formal charge. That is the same thing you are going to do if you are asked any questions about resonance. If you were just told to figure out if something has resonance or not, you are going to optimize and do formal charge first. That being said, so if you're trying to analyze it, you're just gonna analyze whatever this structure is for resonance, which it does have resonance. Now, there is a broader definition of resonance, which would have included basically any valid Lewis structure as being part of resonance. We could do that if we ask you to analyze it. So we could say, hey, here is a resonant structure of phosphate. Please tell me what the formal charge is on the phosphorus atom here. So we can claim more structures as resonance, because it does in reality have a bigger definition. But because our emphasis for y'all is going to be focusing in on what is what is the best structure? We want y'all to find the best structure first. So formal charge first, best structure first. And then, once y'all have done the best structure, then you can look for resonance. But I think your textbook and even sometimes in old exam questions, you'll find that will be like, hey, look, this is a resonant structure of phosphate. Tell me something about it. And that is also technically correct, but you're not gonna do it that way. So in this case, all you would do is if the goal is to say, hey, we have given you this red structure for phosphate, tell me what the formal charge is on the phosphorus, then you'll just analyze it for that. And so you'll take that, how many valence electrons does phosphorus have? Which is five. And then we'll go ahead and do our five minus half of all of our bonded electrons or how many sticks? Which is four minus the dots and there's no dots. There's no lone pairs on it, which is positive one. So you will sometimes see resonance used in context when they have not optimized yet for formal charge, but you don't get to do that. I'll give you another quick example of this idea. If you are drawing, when you draw no circles, no circles, nothing round, only only straight, only straight lines. So for example, if we could give you something like C6H12 and you'd be like, ew, actually should be fifteen, I think, whatever. One, two, three, four, five, six. And then we'll just put, we would put hydrogens all around the outsides. So you, you do it right, eight. I did not get the right number of hydrogens. That's eight plus six, that's fourteen, blarg. C6H14. So you could draw a straight one like this. You can draw that. But we, but on exams, we can give the round ones, they look like this. We can give you something that is in a circle or that is round. You, if you're drawing it, only ever straight lines, only ever straight lines for you. We can give you circle things, ew, that's very messy, I'm sorry about that. But that's the point. You can draw straight lines, we could give you something around if we really wanted to. We don't typically do this a lot though, especially not exam one or exam two. Possibly we do it on exam three, but that's another story for another day. I am so sorry about my voice. Bond strength, bond length. Single is weaker than a double bond, which is weaker than a triple bond. So if I wanna talk about, you talk about strength, this is weak. This is strong. But if I wanna talk about length, this is actually long. This triple bond is actually short. And honestly, these things do go together. The longer the bond is, the weaker it is in part because there's not as much electron density holding those together. The more electrons that are shared between atoms, the stronger the bond is because they're sharing more, more shared stuff. Greater electron density in between them, that's also gonna make the bond physically shorter because of the more electron density and the greater shared electrons. So bond strength and bond length. Longer is weaker. Single bonds are long and weak. Triple bonds are short but strong. Double bonds go in the middle. Um, a coordinate covalent bond. So this, I never know if we're actually gonna ask y'all about this or not. But somebody asked about it in the review, I do cover it in class. So this here is ammonia. And this over here is the the ammonium ion. Bonds, especially, so because you can go, you can go from one to the other with hydrogen. But this hydrogen here is a hydrogen ion. So this thing is just a little proton hanging out. It's got a positive charge, it's hydrogen, it has no electrons, it's got a positive charge. If this is gonna happen, then all of the electrons in the bond come from the nitrogen. So all, I realize it's both, electrons come from nitrogen. This is what we call a coordinate covalent bond. This is really mostly special because it helps us understand how cations can form covalent bonds. And how some of these are made and formed in the real world. So this does have value because we can then talk about like, okay, so I should, how on earth would I ever get a nitrogen with four hydrogens? When ammonia with the lone pair is really pretty stable. And it is in fact because that nitrogen is essentially willing to donate both of those electrons to the bond. So you can get that to work and you can get that to happen. That is very much a real thing. Okay, so coordinate covalent bond, really specific definition comes up especially in like ammonia and occasionally also in, oh, even if it comes up with boron, it usually still has nitrogen dealing with it, because you need the lone pair. You need a lone pair to be able to donate both of those electrons to working with the hydrogen. Oh, and I think that person also was asking about Lewis acids and bases. We, so we can talk about coordinate covalent bonds here. But as far as Lewis acids and bases, that is a 1312 topic. That's a Jin Kim two topic. So yes, we will get to Lewis acids and bases, but not until like March second semester. So yes, but also no. For those of you curious, you know, I don't keep track of where I am, I just look for blank white space and then go, hmm. I wonder if this one is because of the exam question. Darn it. So there are actually two math problems that I need to do first. So actually, even though this is loading up, let me go ahead and actually do the math problems before I look at the old exam. Because the five chlorines with iodine, I think that's maybe, I think that's an old exam question. Basically, I may also have to make apologies, this made sense to me last night with this much information. I don't know that it makes sense to me this morning. So I'm gonna cross my fingers, it's actually an old exam question. And I'll take a look, I'll do my best. But two percent composition, hey, look, problems that I wanted to do, that I was gonna do, that I am gonna do. Not just that I want to, I, I am, I am gonna do these, I'm just gonna add a page. So I'll figure out where this goes. So first of all, if what we're doing is percent composition, we can do regular percent composition with something like here's sodium chloride. This is made from one sodium and one sodium has a as I grab my periodic table beside me, has an atomic mass of 22.99 and the chlorine has atomic mass of 35.45. And I can add these together. And when I add these together, I get something that I've looked at before, but don't remember the number, 58.44. I could do the percent composition of sodium in NACL. What I would do then is I would take whatever my contribution of sodium is, and there's only one sodium here. If there were two sodiums, I'd multiply this by two and divide it by the total. Since it's percent, I'm gonna multiply everything by a hundred percent. So percent composition is looking at the contribution of each element and what it does to the total. That's good enough. And again, if I had two sodiums, if this was magnesium chloride, and we were doing this with chlorine, then we would definitely put in two times the 35.45 divided by the total if we were doing chlorine, because there's two of them. So we are gonna keep in mind how many of each atom there are. Okay, but usually when people are asking me this, they usually wanna go backwards. So I have two different examples backwards. Elemental analysis reveals a compound of 66% calcium and 34% phosphorus. What's the empirical formula? So may not have realized this, but anytime that we are looking at formulas, these are in either an atom to atom or a mol to mol ratio. So our only goal here is to get back to a mol to mol ratio. Well, I had percentages. What am I gonna do with that? We are gonna assume a sample size and these percentages are gonna be in mass, I should have put more words, it's a problem. Assume percentage as 100 grams. So this lets me assume that I actually have 66 grams of calcium and 34 grams of phosphorus. and thirty-four grams of phosphorus. So I do that because again, these percentages should be percent by mass. Problem also should have told us that, but huh, I didn't write that down. So you get to assume whatever percentage you want or whatever your total sample mass originally was, a hundred makes our lives a little bit easier. So I'm just going to use a hundred grams. Sometimes you're actually given grams to begin with. That also works great. So here's sixty-six grams, thirty-four grams of phosphorus. I'm going to go to my periodic table, which is a mess. And here's calcium. And it has an atomic mass of forty point oh eight. So I'm going to divide this by forty point oh eight. Because basically what we are doing is we are saying that there are forty point oh eight grams of calcium in one mole. And I am then going to get moles of calcium. So my holes of calcium here are one point six four seven moles of calcium. I'm going to do the same thing to phosphorus. So I have thirty-four grams of phosphorus. I'm going to go to my periodic table and find phosphorus, which I have scribbled all over. Oh my gosh, uh thirty point nine seven. In one little phosphorus. And that's going to get me one point oh nine eight moles phosphorus. So now technically we have more ratios. They just look bad, uh one point six for seven, one point oh nine eight. Now that we have our more ratios, even though these are bad, um, we, as long as we do the same thing to both numbers, we can do whatever we want or whatever we need to to make these look prettier. So basically now we're trying to get whole numbers. So one thing I am going to do is going to divide both of these by the same number. But I'm picking the smallest number. Divide by smallest. And I'm picking the smallest number because that way something is going to turn up to be one. So I do now at least have one whole number. That's my phosphorus. My calcium, however, is one point five. That's unfortunate. So this is the part where in order to get rid of the point five, we do think that you know that zero point five is one half. And if I want to get rid of one half, I would multiply it by two to get one. So I am now going to multiply these numbers by two, but I have to do the same thing to both of these. One point five times two is three. One times two is two. And this is my final answer. So I got everything in grams. I divided my grams by moles or divided my grams by the atomic masses to get moles. I divided my moles by the smallest number. Uh I looked to see if I had whole numbers yet. I almost had whole numbers. I multiplied both things by the same number to get whole numbers. And that question specifically asked for empirical formula. What if it doesn't ask for empirical formula though? I know I'm not doing a great job, but I am actually trying to mute myself so I can blow my nose and cough on occasion. So my apologies for the awkward silence as occasionally. They are supposed to be for your comfort. So totally new question. Uh molecular mass of the compound containing eighty-five point six three carbon is uh twenty-eight point oh five grams per mole. If hydrogen makes up the rest of the compound, what's the molecular formula? So again, I should have put in percent by mass, but it, this is supposed to be by mass. So I have eighty-five point six three grams of carbon, which means the rest of this is going to be hydrogen. Um, so I can take a hundred minus eighty-five point six three to figure out that I have fourteen point three seven grams of hydrogen. We are just going to divide this by the atomic mass. Oh, I should go back and grab it. Uh so you guys know I'm not cheating. Carbon is twelve point oh one. Hydrogen is one point zero zero eight. So I'm using numbers off of this periodic table. Carbon, uh, I get a value of seven point one three. Hydrogen, I get fourteen point three. Just kind of weird. I divide this by the smaller number again. Because this would be carbon seven point one three and hydrogen fourteen point three. So dividing things both by the same number. Uh, we don't get perfect numbers, but these are, these are pretty close to get me CH two here. So but the thing is, is that this here is technically my empirical formula. And that's not actually what I'm looking for. I actually want the molecular formula. So the molecular formula means I need to know how many of each element I actually have. Well, they also gave me another piece of information. And that's what I'm going to use to get there. So my total thing is twenty-eight point oh five. So the molecular is this twenty-eight point oh five. My empirical, this is twelve point oh one plus two times one point zero zero eight. Which I have not apparently written out. It's unfortunate. Twelve point oh one plus two times one point zero zero eight. So this is fourteen point oh two six. Um, so basically this is the mass, um, again, either in AMUs or in grams per mole of my empirical unit. So now what I want to know is how many empirical units do I have in one molecular one? So what I'm going to do is to take this number and make it my denominator. Because this is, this is the small unit. This is the big unit. So this should tell me how many there actually are. So this is kind of like if you had like the big jar of jelly beans. These are jelly beans pretend. Uh, and you wanted to know how many jelly beans were in there? If you could say that I knew that like one jelly bean is like five grams. And this, the weight of all of these jelly beans was twenty grams total, then you could take your twenty grams and divide by five and find out there were four jelly beans. That's the goal. So molecular is the total. Number jelly beans, this fourteen point zero two six is the number, is the mass of one jelly bean. So I do a little bit of division. I just get the number two. So now I'm going to do is go back to this thing and basically multiply by two. So this should actually be C two, H four as my molecular formula. So I know that's all a little fast, but that is how that one works. So empirical formula, find the empirical formulas. Uh, molar mass. Then use whatever the empirical formulas molar mass is to get a coefficient from the molecular mass given in the problem. So this twenty-eight number was in the problem. I didn't make it up. I didn't solve for the twenty-eight number. That was in the problem. From there, you should get a coefficient and you're going to use that coefficient to multiply by all your subscripts. So we had CH two, now I have C two, H four. So the next thing to do are all of the problems from the uh old exam, but I am actually going to take a brief break. So this might wind up being in two separate videos, depending on how my Microsoft Teams works.